Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to lead the Senate Fire Department of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local?
Council Lambeth.
Present.
Council Rodrick.
Present.
Council Bowlin.
Present.
Council Lenick.
Present.
Council Costa.
Yeah.
Council Ruben and Council Murphy are absent.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the following: approval in minutes from regular meeting July 13, 2009; Council Bowlin abstained, absent; approval of executive session minutes from July 13, '09; Council Bowlin abstained, absent; received in minutes from the following boards and commissions: zoning board of review, conservation commission, historical cemetery commission, economic development commission, planning board three, and the cemetery commission. Correspondence received and filed: received neighborhood petition regarding lots 24-3, 24-4, Railroad Avenue, referred to town administrator and town solicitor; received from Rhode Island statewide coalition invitation to seventh annual meeting; received from Virginia Butterworth regarding remarks of last council meeting; received from Joanne Rogers requesting two stop signs on corner of Church and Hooper, referred to Chief Blakey and Steve Belucci, DPW director; approval of tax assessor abatements; distribution of town treasury reports; draft of 630-09 Treasury report; annual municipal and school order to general approval, 715-09; finally, Paulier and Associates LLP engagement letter, analysis of outstanding school debt. Waste water management, John Lindcourt requests authorization for town administrator to prepare documents and submit paperwork to apply for $300,000 in financing from Rhode Island Clean Water Finance Agency in connection with community septic system loan program. And that is tonight's consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made in seconded discussion, seeing none. All those in favor. Move on to public hearings advertised. Sitting as a board of licensing commissioners, Fuel Circle Incorporated, 1837 Main Road, request approval of -- subject to meeting all legal requirements effective August 1, 2009, holiday license and petroleum storage.
I make a motion that the license be granted, obviously with approval, subject to meeting all legal requirements effective August 1, 2009.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
Seconded discussion, seeing none. All those in favor. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
One finished person is Chris Spencer. Request public hearing on proposed zoning changes continued from July 13 meeting.
Good evening. At the last meeting, Councilor Costa asked for a memo from me outlining how I would go about setting up some sort of a zoning subcommittee, so I should have a memo in front of you dated July 22. In that, what I did point out was that the planning board already has a zoning subcommittee that's looking at the zoning. The majority of the zoning we're looking at right now have to do with dimensional use changes and utilizing the GIS to remap some of those areas. So I made the suggestion that this -- or this committee right now is made up of the town planner, administrative officer, planning board chair, two members of the planning board, and we also have been involving the zoning officer, and then I thought the planning board attorney or the town solicitor as needed when there's some proposals that are getting ready. And one of the other recommendations I made at the last meeting was that prior to zoning proposals coming before the council, to set a public hearing date that a actual workshop or presentation be made to the council so the council is up to speed on what the reasons are for the zoning changes, and also that the zoning subcommittee would involve any of the other boards or commissions or other town staff as needed depending on the proposal. I just, again, I was trying to get away from this, the larger 14-member committee that was being proposed and trying to show how this already fits into what we're doing, so... And then I also made a recommendation in this memo that we have a series of workshops or zoning charrettes, more or less, like a design charrette, but really to solicit input from all the different boards and commissions and all the stakeholders, just with some major zoning changes as they see needed. So that was my recommendation, so... Any questions?
Mr. Spencer, I have one question.
Sure.
When we left last meeting, it was my impression that you opposed this extra, what I'll call, extra advisory committee, and I know what Mr. Costa asked, but...
Right. Well, no, I do, but again, what I'm saying is that there's already a zoning subcommittee. This is how it's set up.
Okay.
Through the planning board, so it's an advisory committee to the planning board. So that's already, we've already set that up. We've started working on it, and this one that's coming before you is part of that first proposal.
Yep.
So...
I just want to be clear.
Yep.
Which group are you...
Yeah, because I don't, I really, since you already have the planning board that's advisory to the council, and this committee would be under the planning board, rather than have a separate board or commission or subcommittee that's outside of both the council and the planning board. So just to sort of direct that.
Yep, thank you.
Notwithstanding Mr. Spencer's comments, I would still propose the larger committee. I think it's important, including to have council representatives, town council representatives take leave. I think what it indicates, as Mr. Spencer says, there's going to be some group that's doing it. It's not going to be the planning board as a whole doing it. There's going to be some group. It's really just a matter of who's included on that group. So I would respectfully suggest that it be a bit more inclusive than his suggestion. Other than that, it's up to you, the policy, to something or nothing.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
May I take this afternoon to thank you for writing the letter.
Sure.
The memorandum, and I appreciate that. And I have a tendency to agree with you, that this is a more efficient way of going about it, and, I mean, how many committees can we have doing this? Since we already have one, I think it's efficient. Certainly, the one that the solicitor is proposing is comprehensive, but isn't needed, and I think the efficient method would be the method that I would prefer.
You know, I agree with you. If we're talking about some specific changes that you're proposing to the, to our zoning ordinances, I think this committee's fine. And I think, right, if we're going to go to a major overhaul, then I think we need those charrettes, and they should include a much larger group. The last time, I believe it was in 2000, that we did a major update on the zoning, I think we spent almost a year at public hearings before we finally passed a document, and I think that process probably could have been shortened, you know, had we had those charrettes earlier and got a general feel of what was going to be the best proposal to put forward. There was mistakes made there, and I think that we have the opportunity to correct some of them now. And as far as what you want to see, that you put before, is that you want to have the public hearing for. I thought our solicitor was just going to tweak those things to make sure that they were...
Yeah, so I'm working on a draft for him, and then that's going to be going back to the planning board, because the planning board would like to see that prior to it coming back to the council again.
Because we're looking...
They were adamant that they didn't want major changes.
If I'm seeing this, we're looking at two different things. We're looking at a smaller group of changes to the zoning ordinances and then the major overhaul with the update of the comp plan.
Sure. And the way this committee looked at this, we looked at trying to tackle all of the zoning at once, and we said, you know, right now we have a priority. We've got a commercial infrastructure that is just dying, and based on the zoning, there really is no redevelopment potential in a lot of those, on a lot of those parcels. So we felt that it was really more or less an emergency to hurry up and try to get something together, so we had the ability to do some review, to provide a little bit more development potential on those lots and try to spur some economic development along many of our existing commercial parcels.
And I'm in agreement with what you're trying to accomplish, Mr. Spencer. Any other comments?
Mr. President, I firmly believe that having a 14-member subcommittee or, I think it's just too unwieldy, and I think with a smaller committee and then having the charrettes, you know, inviting the larger group, because obviously there would be certain areas in zoning that certainly need special fine tuning, and I think that's when you need to call in, you know, the larger group to discuss it then, as opposed to having this larger group, you know, constantly trying to get them together for normal zoning.
It's difficult enough.
Yeah. I would make a motion we adopt the planning office's recommendation.
For a public hearing, to set a date.
This process.
Basically, what we're doing is we're going to set a date for a public hearing on the proposed changes, but we'll do it with this group's recommendation. But you don't have that, if we're setting a public hearing and we don't have the draft yet for the solicitor to review?
Right. Yeah, it may have to get pushed back if, because it's going to be going to the, again, it's going to the planning board first, so even if I had a draft right now, I couldn't say that that's what the planning board is going to be recommending, so...
Then I have, then I have an issue with setting a date, and the problem with that is, because if it hasn't gone back to the, the planning board has to have a draft and a document that we're going to publish to set a date for a public hearing, because the public hearing has to have the publication of what it is that we're going to be discussing that evening. So until that's taken care of, I think it's premature for the date.
Yeah, I think the idea was to set out those dates, and obviously, well before that went out to advertisement, those drafts would be available. We're just trying to set up the dates that it would, everything would fall under.
Okay, then what are you thinking of in terms of dates for a public hearing on these zoning changes?
I actually don't have a schedule in front of me. I did give it to the council last week. Mr. Tights had proposed a A and B, and because I was not going to be available for the planning board meeting at the end of August, I gave two other recommendations, which was a C and a D, and I think the D is the one that the council was recommending, and I just don't happen to have that with me, I don't think. I apologize. I'll take a look. Oh, actually, I do, I do right here. Sorry.
It said, say, a public hearing on September 14, but I don't know if I can make that if I don't have everything.
That's the point that I'm making right now, was without a document, you know, that the, I thought that the problem that we had last time was the solicitor had some questions about what was being proposed and whether they were sustainable in court.
Right, and what happened?
And that you two guys were going to get together and try to straighten out that issue, and if that issue's resolved, to me, we can set a date, you know, based on...
Yeah, at this point, it's not, and I think what we agreed was that I would take the first crack at the draft, give it to him, and then it would be coming before the planning board. But the planning board at the last meeting was adamant that they didn't want major changes to that, so they just didn't want to have what they had already voted on come to the council with changes that they hadn't voted on, so I think that's, that was the reason.
Well, that's why I'm reluctant, that's why I'm reluctant to set a date for a public hearing, although you and the solicitor have straightened out the issue, been back to the planning board.
Yeah.
And we have a document that the solicitor's comfortable enough with that if we have to defend it.
That's fine. We can, after the planning board has met and the solicitor and I have come to some agreements in this...
But we gotta do, we gotta do three weeks of advertising, 21 days of advertising. So we're here, we're here now. It's at the end of July.
Yep.
You want September 14, two weeks into September, which means you would have to have that to the solicitor and back to the planning board by the middle of August.
Right, we were looking at the, planning board looking at it August 4.
Okay.
So, but again, since I have not, I had to work on the main road parking issues and all the drawings, so I had to put this aside. So since I have not gotten that to the solicitor, I don't know how much time he's going to want for review, so in fairness to him, I would say that probably the appropriate thing to do is to let this go between the solicitor and myself, then get to the planning board, then I'll come back with the final draft as it's being presented.
I think once we, once we have a final draft, I would have no problem with setting the date for this, for this, but I think it's premature to try to set a date for a public hearing without a document or a draft.
I'm still holding that August 4 planning board date so that if the drafts are done in time, I could attend. Obviously, we're a week behind. I haven't seen anything.
Okay.
But if we do have it in time, the August 11 date would be the council meeting that would still allow us to meet.
To set that, meet the, September 14.
Right, right. Now we'll have to move it to the second meeting in August and move the public hearing to the second meeting in September.
Okay.
We'll come back to the council before setting the date.
Okay.
And I'd like, I'd like to go forward with my, my motion to proceed with Mr. Spencer's planning.
With the group as proposed by Mr. Spencer.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion in second to proceed with the changes to the zoning using the current structure of the town planner, administrative officer, planning board chair, two members of the planning board, the zoning officer, and the planning board attorney, the town solicitor and town solicitor to review the recommendations. That's what you're proposing. We have a motion in second to have that moved forward with that as the committee.
I'll second it.
We have, oh, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Council Leonard, evaluation process for town administration.
Yes, this was continued from our last meeting, and the purpose in continuing it was to give everybody an opportunity to look at the draft evaluation form that was handed out at our last meeting and to see if this was still the form that we wanted to use or if anybody had proposed changes. And Madam Clerk did urge everybody to contact her if she had any changes, so I await to see if anybody had any changes.
I did. I received this, but the patch due end of this, a request from the council of judicial questions.
Okay.
And I also had that discussion, I believe, with, ask Mr. Gonzo if there were some issues that you wanted to add.
Unfortunately, I was on, fortunately, I was on vacation and did not have an opportunity to review it as yet.
Mr. President, I wouldn't have any objection if we carried this forward for another two weeks to give Mr. Gonzo a chance to look at the situation.
Can we have a motion to continue to the next council meeting?
I'll make a motion to continue this item to the next council meeting.
Motion made in second discussion, seeing none. All those in favor. Again, Mr. Leonard, discussion, our discussed meeting with the executive director of Rhode Island Legal Cities and Towns.
Yeah, I just, since we already have a workshop scheduled at the end of August, and given the fact that our general assembly, and I'm hesitating to pick my words carefully, given the fact that our general assembly hasn't displayed a lot of initiative in addressing the fundamental problems of the state, I thought it might be worthwhile if we had a chance to talk with the executive director of the legal cities and town to see if, from a grassroots standpoint, we could start generating some initiative. And when I say the general assembly, I exclude, exclude with thanks, our representatives, Mr. Edwards and Mr. Fiegley and Mr. McLaughlin. I think they did the best they could, but the general assembly as a body, everybody in the room knows what their outcome was, and we're still stuck as a state with fundamental structural problems. Now, whether Dan has any solutions, I don't know, but I thought it was worth at least considering having a discussion with him.
If that's a motion, I'd second it, although it might make more sense to look for an invitation in September at this point.
I just thought, since we already had a workshop scheduled, that was, there was nothing scientific about the date.
Well, it's a month away.
That's true. Might involve a lot of discussion. I'd like to get some explanation as to what happened in Providence the last year, and I agree with your sentiments completely.
Then I think we have, we have a motion to invite Mr. Dan Beattley from the executive director of legal cities and towns to our August 31, 2009 workshop. The motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor. It's unanimous. Mr. Edwards?
I see the clerk had excellent placement of my agenda tonight. Good evening, Honorable Member of the Council. This is probably the very simple item for you. Included in your package, you'll see two samples of the Tiverton Shield, okay? This is for the abutment on the new bridge, and if you'll notice, there is the official seal, this one here, okay, which is our official seal of the town, and then we have this modified shield, which you'll see behind you, okay? DOT recommends this particular shield, and the reason they do is...
It's simple to do.
No.
Costs us money.
Actually, this is fairly simple to do because most of the shield is just etched. This entire shield has to be water cut, okay? When you're going 50 and the light is on at night, and you're going across the new bridge doing 50 miles an hour, this particular shield here, all she will see is the outline of the shield itself. You won't see any of the detail because it will just be etched on, won't be cut out. Just so you know, your neighbor, Portsmouth, is using a shield very similar to this one. It's got the outline of the shield and then the seven stars, which represent the seven islands making up Portsmouth. I need this council to give me a decision, preferably this evening, on which is your choice, because they take, it takes a long time to get this thing. This is a water cut out of brass, has to go through a very long seminal process. A lot of people have to look at it, and they need to get this in the works fairly soon. Because if, I don't know if you saw the mock-up, but it's actually like a four-by-eight sheet of brass that they use for this, this particular door, the thing, and they actually, they cut the name out, they have the shield, and they have these little stars here, which are attached, but the name, the state, and the shield itself will all be cut out, so as you drive by, you'll see that image. It'll be backlit.
But the only problem is that the image you see is basically Tiverton, Rhode Island, with a few crosshatches.
Well, you'll see the shield.
Yeah.
Which is what you see behind you.
Yes, I know. Obviously, since I've already tipped my hand, Mr. President, I like the second one, but I don't know that this is a life or death issue.
Anybody else want to weigh in on this?
I mean, obviously, it's visibility, and if it's etched, as you told me, on the second one, that you really wouldn't see it.
You won't see any of the detail. It'll just be etched in. It won't be cut through.
Well, Mr. President, just to move things along one way or the other, I'll make a motion that we recommend the second example that Mr. Edwards showed us, which has, has more than the crosshatching.
I'm going to go with the second choice as well, for this reasoning. It may be true that as you're passing by at 50 miles an hour, you'll see nothing on the second illustration, but on the first illustration, there is nothing to see. Do you follow what my reasoning is? I'd at least like the possibility...
Mr. Leonard, you know, I listen to you quite a bit, and a lot of times I have a hard time following your reasoning through.
Well, there is nothing. I mean, this shield, the first shield, shows absolutely nothing, so...
No, no, I know. What the difference, the difference between the two is, one's backlit, and I think it's just, so that, you know, at least the word Tiverton in Rhode Island, when they put the second one up, they're not talking about cutting the Tiverton in Rhode Island and then etching the middle. It's all etched, so there's nothing to, there's no backlighting.
Oh, no. No, on the second one, this one here, what you will see, and you can see where it's dark.
Yeah.
The outline of the shield itself, outline of the shield itself, and a cross, and that's all you will see.
That's right. But the Tiverton in Rhode Island are going to show backlit on either one of these.
On either one.
And we're going to get to see a different kind of shield, so the large dark lines are going to be cutouts.
Yes.
On the second one. So the light will show through where we see the dark line.
I'm going to, I'm going to go with the second one. At least there's a possibility of seeing something. The first one essentially is nothing but lines. It shows nothing.
But again, that's, you know...
Is that a second?
I'll second Mr. Leonard's motion.
At least we're moving ahead a little.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but the thing is...
I have no strong...
The first one, the first one is the shield. The second one, the second one is more than the shield, and that's what it boils down to. Ms. Eppke.
Laura Eppke, I'm just, the second one, I believe in your packet, is the one below you, Mr. Bowlin, right? And that's the official seal of the town, correct?
Yes.
The shield behind you, is that, it's my recollection that was created fairly recently. Is it representative of something?
No, I think that's one, and they've added the rest to this, because the second one has the state seal, the Fort Barton, the Columbia, but I believe that the one behind us is the official.
I just think from a historic perspective, the seal below you is what appears on the comp plan and the this and the that and...
Actually, that shield that you see behind you is on that, that's the seal.
On that.
That's the shield. That's the difference.
Ah, okay, okay, thank you.
And then, like I said before, Portsmouth has elected to have their shield put on with their stars on.
Okay, thank you.
Can we have a motion in second? We're still having discussion.
Yeah, well, I would adopt the old management principle of KISS, you know, keep it simple, stupid, and that would lead me to choose the first one.
Okay.
It'll all be lit up. I, the second one is prettier, to be sure, so I'd probably abstain and avoid the dedication like this.
But that could be a dilemma this evening, depending on his goals. But we have, we have a motion in second to adopt the second one presented to us, which is the one with the four items in the Tiverton, Rhode Island, and that's been motioned and seconded, so we'll move this along. All those in favor?
Two. Opposed? Okay, that one fails, so now will somebody make a motion to adopt the first one?
I make a motion to adopt the shield as the marker on the new bridge.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Without further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Opposed to the, motion carries three to two. We're down with number one, as per your recommendation.
Thank you very much. This is a poor selling job that causes them to go through this lengthy discussion.
Chris Spencer, the town planner, status report on the main road parking.
Good evening again. I think you may have in your packet some drawings that I provided to DOT to indicate where I thought parking would be possible based on road widths, looking at a 10-to-11-foot travel lane and an eight-foot parking lane that comprised of about 440 parking spaces total. total from Sousa Road to North, actually to State Avenue. They came back with some drawings. I met with them, two representatives of Ride Dot, Steve Berlucci and Chief Blakey, and I met with them last Thursday. And they provided some drawings here. I couldn't provide those in your packet because I didn't have a way to reduce them. And then just today, they sent me some more drawings, which I can give to you right now. But in all, the total parking that they're providing in their proposal is 140, so about 300 spaces less than what I had indicated. But my biggest concern right now is that, starting as you're going north, from about a half a block before Warren Avenue, there's no parking at all until you reach State Avenue. And just prior to State Avenue, they've provided three spaces. So that really takes out all the parking in that dense business area. So I think they've got some constraints with the 12-foot regulation in terms of the driving lane, which is, it's pretty wide in terms of smart growth or any types of the environment we're trying to create. 12-foot park, or 12-foot driving lane is typical of a highway, not typical of an urban area. So I did send them a letter today in response to that, asking them to take another look at it, to try to see if there's any more flexibility so we can get a little bit more parking in that north part of town especially. But I'll be working, coordinating with Steve Berlucci and Chief Blakey on that. So I just want to give you guys a packet here, and I apologize about the lateness of it, but I just got the drawings today, so...
This is where the parking is going to be committed.
This is what DOT is recommending.
The only thing I'm going to suggest from the council, because, you know, in the conversation I had with Mr. Spencer, when we took the vote to send the letter to DOT requesting the parking, that that was the approval to allow the parking on Main Road. Or do we wish to have, because there's going to be time constraint issues here, and I just want to make sure, or are we having him come back when there's changes to this plan to update this? And we need to clarify this so that this thing doesn't get bogged down, slowed down, and ended when they stripe it because we haven't met. I mean, because when they finish the paving, I'm sure they're going to, whatever the plan that they're going to approve, it's going to get striped that way. And I was of the opinion that when we agreed to send the letter to DOT requesting the parking was, that's what we did. And whatever got approved was going to get approved for that stretch. And I want to make sure of that so that I don't find myself in trouble with you people, you know, later on, that that's not what we intended.
No, that was my understanding also, that once we had decided on the parking and set forth, and Mr. Spencer was going to work with DOT, and hopefully come to a compromise plan somewhere more than they show you at the moment.
Yes.
Are we in agreement with that? Mr. Spencer knows how to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Mr. President, I just want to tell you that I've already got a few phone calls on this, so you're saying you're not going to involve the public on this, though you're going, just so that when they call me, I can tell them this is done, and when the DOT gets back, that's...
Well, you know, if...
Because it was in the paper and on the agenda, people have been getting asked where you are...
Well, then I think, I think if people had a concern with that, and it's on the agenda that we're discussing the status of the main road parking, is there anyone here who wanted to, you know, discuss the main road parking? Because this is why we publish agendas, this is why, you know, we put these things here, so if there's comment to be had from the public, it's unfortunate that some people wait till an action's taken, then come in and want us to change the action because they didn't speak on it. I think that when Mr. Spencer said to me that he's involved the chief and the highway superintendent in coming up with this plan to make sure that, you know, the safety issues and everything are taken into consideration.
But after the last meeting with them, so would we be...
We did meet with Ride Dot, and we're looking at the number of parking places, but primarily, my concern is public safety and not creating hazards, that's what we're going to be looking at. It's, and that's going to be formulated as we go, to make sure that there's no lines coming out of driveways or grades in the road and stuff like that. So we'll be addressing those issues.
Thank you.
Don, did we just say that we're going to accept the 140 recommended by the state? Or are we saying we're going to hang...
No, Chris, no, Chris is going, Chris is going to be negotiating with them, you know, with the help of the chief and the highway superintendent, and try to, you know, get some more, especially in the north end. But what we're saying is, between the three of them deciding what's safe and adequate and fits into the planning for the future, you know, development.
And that's a number support.
Yes.
And maybe less than the 400.
Maybe it's going to be less than the 400, but it'll probably be more than the 140.
Okay. Thank you.
Town administrator requests award a bid for auditing services. I don't know if it's auditing services, services, because it's listed twice.
Jim, he's going to like the adjustment to the engagement letter before it's approved by the town council.
Is any consent statute, it's already been accepted, that's...
Mr. President, because Jim was out last week, we did not receive the engagement letter until Tuesday of last week. And so what we did was, I read through the terms and conditions, and as of late this afternoon, this happened about maybe 4:00, I was able to change some of the billing terms and also the payment terms on this engagement letter. I had the agreement of Paul Dancero, who's the senior. With me tonight is Craig Parisi, he's the senior on this job this year. And so would you explain to the council, page nine, changes of the engagement letter?
Right. From what I understand, you each have a copy of it. I have a revised page nine and...
Give us a chance, we need to dig it out.
Okay.
We have something to pass out.
Yeah.
Prior to this submission, our terms were basically pay upon receipt of the bill. We have extended that to net 15. And also, there was a commencement in July, which now, and they recognize the fact that for us to receive such a significant billing so late in the month of July, they have shifted and moved it basically such that we don't have to pay until August. Could you explain what happened?
Well, that really is the only change you'll see in this whole 11-page letter. Just to move things, keep things more smooth throughout the course of the year, we decided to change the payment schedule. That really is the only change to this whole letter. And what I handed you was going to be the revised page nine, and we'll give Phil and Jim a new copy of the whole thing later this week.
Okay, so we've taken the July 21st payment, moved it to August 1st, and then increased the September, October, November, and December payments to reflect the money that would have been paid in August. So we've taken 2786 and divided that on, or added that to four other payments.
Plus, he's changed the billing, the payment terms to net 15.
Okay.
The total is still the same.
Total hasn't changed, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we accept the adjustment as proposed by the treasurer and by the auditor.
And I'll second the motion.
I'm making that motion because I don't hear any objections from Mr. Donsworthy.
No, I have no objections, but once you, once you vote on that, you're still going to have to vote on...
The awarding of the bid, that's just the engagement letter.
If you could make that subject to review, I have not seen this as though it's in the packet, so if you could make it subject to the solicitor's review.
Okay, awarding, awarding of the services subject to the...
It's already been approved by the solicitor general, Steve. I understand that, but I'd still like to take a look at it, and it's only arrived in my packet today.
I don't have an issue with that, in terms of that. But first of all, okay, we're going to, we've accepted the, we basically accepted under the consent agenda, the letter of engagement. And that should have been brought up when we were going over the consent agenda. Because, because you're now bringing us a change of terms that we've already accepted and passed.
Exactly.
So...
That's why I made the motion to accept the change.
But what I'm saying is, okay, we should go back and revisit...
Actually, Mr. President, we have two things, because we've already accepted the letter of engagement. We've got to change, and the solicitor is saying he'd like a chance to look at it, so...
Well, it's a request to award a bid, so we've...
We can do that one, okay.
That's what I'm saying. We can, we can make the change or accept the change to the letter of engagement in the awarding of the bid. But he still wants it, the awarding of the bid, subject to the approval of the town solicitor. So the motion, you know...
Yeah, I think, I mean, not to get too, it doesn't really matter as a policy thing. Your consent agenda was just distribution of the report, which included the engagement letter. You accepted it as the correspondence, you didn't accept it as far as approving it in your consent agenda. You have that down there as a separate item of the treasurer.
Okay, it's a distribution right of the town treasurer reports. Okay. Then, no problem with changing. Okay, we have that request awarded a bid for the auditing services.
I'm going to motion for us to accept the change on page, the change on page nine.
In essence, we're changing our vote on the consent agenda, not awarding the bid.
Okay. Oh, no, we didn't vote, as the solicitor pointed out. We received the report, and now we're modifying or accepting the letter of engagement with the change proposed.
I'd like to ask how we arrived at the terms, the net 15. That's a very short time period. If you're out sick or something goes anywhere, you're never going to meet that requirement. And isn't it customary to have a net 13 rather than a net 15?
But a net 15, you don't get a date for this.
I mean, it's under my understanding that the town usually pays bills...
You put the 15th instead of the 1st, that's all it does.
We do.
Am I correct?
Well, I'll make the change.
I mean, it's, 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 it's kind of, you know, Doc, if you've got a, if you've got a date set here that I owe you on August 1st, that 15, to me, is just, might as well just put the date as August 15. Because you get the dates, this is not, this is not, we're not, but no, no, but what I'm saying is, we're not paying for service after the service is done, so when I'm finished, I give you a bill and you've got net 15 on this. There's a schedule. So the schedule, the schedule could have read August 15, September 15, October 15, November 15, and December 15. And that's the same thing as saying net 15. Because it's, the payments are there on a periodic basis as the work is being performed. It's not after the work is done, when I'm done, you get this. So I mean, that's, that's what a net 15 is. Net 15 is, I finished the work today, I've got 15 days to pay it. But we've got a schedule. So net 15 is just, to me, it's kind of like a, we could have just changed all the dates to say August 15th, September 15th. It's like, you know, but you know what the date is, so there isn't a reason the payment isn't there. It's not like not, you know, the work got done, somebody's out sick, we can't make a payment. The payment's due, it's scheduled to be paid.
Are you suggesting we scratch the net 15?
I just, I, you know, I'm not suggesting you do that, but you could just as easily modify it to the 15th and serve the same purpose, is all I'm saying.
I don't want to get hung up on that.
Well, I don't either, it's, it's...
Prior to this time, it was due upon receipt. That was the terms that we were working on. And so what we've done is, we've pushed it back. Rather than walk in with the bill and say, "Treasurer, pay this today, I have 15 days", basically to collect the money, prepare a check, and mail it out.
No, I understand that, but when you have, when you have a payment schedule, that you know a payment is due August 1st, you're paying it on August 1st. You don't need 15 more days to pay something than to do August 1st. You don't need 15 more days to pay something than to do September 1st. There's a schedule. This is not, they come in and perform a bit of work, and it's done at September 8th, and you get 15 days from the 8th when they finish the work. They're going to do work for the course of the year, and they get billed, and they're going to bill us at this period of time. That's all it is. Whether you say 1st or 15th, even regardless, you know that's a payment due a certain amount of money on that day.
If I may make a comment, Mr. President. In the past, when the bill, billings are received, we process them for payment in a timely manner.
Yeah.
They've never held us to a date, they've never held us to, you know, it's impossible to pay something upon receipt.
Yeah.
And, I mean, it's just, you know, semantics, so to speak.
That's all it is.
It's never been a problem.
It's not, and I don't see it as a problem, no. What is your motion, Mr. Leonard?
What I've motioned was that we accept the change to a document we accepted on the consent agenda.
Okay.
And that's all.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
To the, accepting of the changes to the engagement letter, which is the page nine of the document we received. We have a motion and second, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, we've accepted the engagement letter. Now we're dealing with the, the award of the bid.
Make a motion that the coun, oh, I'm sorry, I don't make motions.
You request a motion to award the bid.
Request the council approve the award of this bid to Parmally Poria and Associated LLP. They are the low bidder. It's going to be a three-year contract. And just for information purposes, the first year payment fits within the budgeted amount.
Okay.
I'll make that motion that we award the contract for auditing services to Parmally Poria and Associated LLP.
Subject to review of the town, to the town solicitor.
Subject to review by the town solicitor.
Mr. President, I still have a point of order. I mean, no disrespect to the town solicitor, but the state law is pretty clear, once the state auditor general has really accepted it, I mean, they give a solicitor who is acceptable, so on and so forth, there's virtually no choice. So for the life of me, I can't quite see why we need to use the solicitor's valuable time reviewing something that really is an issue of state law and approved by the auditor general.
The firm is approved by the auditor general, I don't believe the contract is, and then, and therefore, I think the solicitor should review the contract to make sure that, and that's the way I'm going to view that.
That's what I do.
But it's, I'm going to belabor the point, but it's a form that's set forth. I don't think we have a whole heck of a lot of choice, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Donsworthy.
We can only award the bid at this point to Parmally Poria, okay? But the auditor general has not, he has seen the proposal?
Yep.
Okay, I have not looked at the engagement letter, because I just got back today, and it wasn't here before I left. I'm assuming the engagement letter follows the bid.
I would trust that.
There is, there is no harm in seeing another pair of eyes looking at something. That's the way I'm going to view this, is not in addition to what we, you know...
I just think billable hours, that's all, excuse me.
No, it's not. This is part of, this is part of the retention that we pay.
This would be part of the flat fee, so what's the charge?
Do we have a second, do we have a second to the motion?
No, but Counsel Robert made the motion, I don't have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. We sort of management request award a sewer construction contract for Cananica Street. I have to recuse myself on this issue. Our vice president's not here, who's going to take over?
You need the clerk to conduct an election of the remaining four for an acting town council president. Because otherwise...
I know, but I just, I'm not going to face an ethics complaint.
I didn't realize that we're going to have...
Yeah, I didn't either.
I would nominate Edward Rodrick to be the acting president of this council.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any other, any gun who cast a vote, Mr. Robert, to be the acting president?
There you go. Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we accept the project.
It's a low bid. We, we'll be awarding the contract with the approval of the council as soon as we obtain the funding. The funding was requested in April, has not arrived yet, but it should be coming momentarily, hopefully.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Counsel Leonard, seconded by Counsel Lambert. Any discussion?
I want to make sure it has your usual language about subject to all... I want to make sure it has your usual language about subject to all the requirements.
Subject to all the requirements.
Is there, is an amendment necessary here to make it subject to the saving of funds?
Uh, I don't know that you need to. I won't sign the contract without the funds. You can trust me on that one.
I don't know if he has an excavator, street excavator's license and whatnot, John?
He, he's an out-of-town contractor. He will be getting a street excavator's contract, yes.
Mr. Counselor General, approximately when will we be receiving these funds?
Uh, no, we're not, but it should be coming any time now because it was requested in April, the drawdown, and it's last year's funding. So it should be coming any time, you know. We're having the same, we're having the same trouble trying to get the money for the roof of the senior center, okay? We're ready to award the contract. We've got council approval, but we don't have the money yet, so we have not yet awarded it. So as soon as the money comes in, we will look at making the award, subject to all the requirements, legal requirements.
What this will allow us to do is get all of the contract paperwork all, all put together and ready to be signed. So as soon as the funds become available, it will get signed.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Oppose? The motion's fair.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Welcome back, Mr. President.
Thank you. The town clerk requests council approval for purchase of map cabinets utilizing current land evidence systems provided at low-cost proposal.
Yes, that's for the, you know, we're in the process of getting our maps digitized. And we did get some proposals. We tried to order the, this is the maps that would put, this is the file cabinets that would put the maps in envelopes. And because those books were actually, some were bomb books, so they had to cut them, so you've got to put these maps into an envelope style file. So we did go online. We got another proposal. There's only certain people that are allowed to distribute to this area. We've researched other communities. We went to other communities. This seems to be the, the kind of standard of what they use. And the funds will come from the technology grant. Right now, we'll only be purchasing one, but we may purchase another if funds allowed.
Madam Clerk, these, these envelopes, are they plastic zippers? Is that what they are?
Yes, they're, it's a file cabinet that stands about, I don't know, about four feet tall, I guess, and moving, and the maps.
Incredibly.
These are the big books. If maps you have in the box, they'll be in there, two in each folder, sometimes more than two. You know, really, we still have those big books with the maps. Now we're digitizing to try and get people to use them on the computer. They are damaged. They are, some of them are rumen. They've been written on. We've got to protect them. Most communities are really getting big appropriations each year to help protect all this stuff. I'm just trying to keep plugging along with what we have.
Hanging them, hanging them vertically, isn't that going to, for the damage, wouldn't it be better if they, if they lay horizontally?
No, they're actually kind of contained in there where they are. That's what, it's the standard for, for the maps, no matter what.
The map doesn't fall to the bottom of the envelope?
No, it's between the two end sides of the envelope. It's held in place.
And it's held.
As opposed to if they're horizontal, the weight pressing down on the, the ones on the bottom, it's actually worse. They can, can they get, bond into the plastic, even though it's an archival plastic. It's better to hang them and not have the pressure on them.
It also comes from the state. I've actually gone through them on which files to use and everything. We've been having research to.
Does file cabinet warrant anybody want, we need a warrant?
It's going to be here for longer than I would be here.
What, what are we buying, though? We had proposals for two different cabinets. Which one are we?
One will hold double the other. As funds allow from that technology, I'm going to try, and, and as we figure out just what room in there.
Okay, so we're going to start off with the, with the Model 400, the, the $5,000 one?
Right.
And then, as money comes available, we're going to buy an eight, the 800 UD?
We'd actually be spending $4,000, $400,000. See, the two folks, ACS happens to be the provider of our recording system, but they also are the provider in this area and they give the lowest cost.
Yeah.
Can we buy the 200 zipped one and have a reservation for them because the price would be about $1,400 more for the 400?
We're going to go with the cheapest, but it depends on the space. They come and they measure out the vault. We don't have a lot of space in that vault. We're trying to overhaul space, so I put both of them because hopefully, we could buy both of them, but the funds will not allow it right now.
Okay.
So, so you're saying that you're going to purchase from ACS, the Model 400?
Right.
At 4417.
And those are the only two proposals I could get on that particular.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the acceptance of the bid, assuming meeting all other legal obligations to purchase the material from ACS.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to purchase the map cabinets of ACS, been seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Town Administrator, announcement, comments, and questions?
We have finally received a landfill license. And it's a three-year license that will take us out to December the 12th, the year 2011. I received an email today. Actually, I received it while I was on vacation. This was directed to the fire chief and it's from a couple in Westport. "We want to thank you for your assistance, of your company, at the fire at our home in Westport on July, on June 29th. Under difficult conditions in terms of location and terrain, your personal concern and compassion in the aftermath was truly appreciated. Emo and Anna Bullis." So we'd like to thank our fire chief for his assistance in that matter. You've received a document this evening at your place, whereas I will be advertising for an assistant to the administrator.
No, I see nothing.
Right down here, maybe? Underneath?
I think it was on here.
It was at your place. No? Oh, that was just mine? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it went out to everyone. I thought it went out to everyone.
Surprise, surprise.
It's just an advertisement for an assistant for my office.
Is that an open position?
I'm sorry?
Is that an open position?
Yes, it is. It's currently being filled by a temp. Open Space has received a grant for $5,000 for the cleanup of the Babcock, Babcock Farm. It's a 50-50 grant and we will be providing our 50% in kind. Elderly. It's the entrance to Ridamar Woods on East Road, correct. We also received an elderly affairs grant in the amount of $5,483, which will help the senior center with their assistant. We have a draft copy of the $250,000 paving program that we spoke about in the past. We will be reviewing that with the solicitor and looking to get that in place. It's going to be a $250,000 grant and we will have to make payment on the invoices first and then submit them for reimbursement. Tax collections. As of July 27th, today, we are behind as compared to last July 27th. We are behind by 1.26% or roughly $131,000. That's all I have. Thank you.
Council announcements, comments, and questions? I know Mr. Leonard had something he wished to.
Mr. President, I'd just like to compliment the South Coast Artists Organization. July 18th and 19th, they had an open studio tour that encompassed a variety of artists in Tiverton, Little Compton, Westport, and Tiverton. And I think from everything I saw and heard, that went very well. It was very well organized. And just in the way of publicity, they have another session scheduled for August 22nd and 23rd. And I would recommend that it was well-publicized before and I'm sure it will be again. And if you have any interest in the arts, it was well worthwhile. Thank you, Mr. President.
I have one more comment, if I may, while we're talking about the arts. I received today a wall hanging system as a gift from the Arts Council, Tiverton Arts Council. As you know, that, you know, they continuously hang up different items on the walls and they're all different sizes and they go in all different places and, you know, they patch up the holes and whatnot. But they have awarded us a wall hanging system that will save our walls and we'll be getting that up within the next few days before they're, because they will be rehanging some artwork August 4th and 5th. Thanks for the reminder.
Did Hannibal?
I was simply going to say that, you know, the chief said that we have a $100,000 shortfall in taxes paid versus last year. I was going to suggest you get Louise Duff to pay her taxes and take care of it. She's not here.
I just have, I, I just, I, I have a question for, for Mr. Bellucci. And it gets to the situation we're talking about with the, the no bin, no barrel policy. I noticed something. How are we going to rectify this situation when the recycle guy comes around at 9:00 in the morning and the trash guy comes around at 3:00 in the afternoon? So people have already put the empty bins away.
Well, I would suggest they leave their bins there. It's the only solution we have.
No, no, I'm just saying, because maybe we need to, when we discuss that program, we really need to discuss how we're going to do that with the trash hauler, because that's not going to be acceptable. People are not going to leave, you know, on a windy day, the barrels are blowing all over hell, and when it's empty, they take them and they put them back in their yard where they belong. And, and it is, it is a great amount of time between the bin pickup and the trash pickup in many areas in town. And in, in, in North Tiverton especially, and I did notice it there, because I watched it for the last two weeks, that the bins are usually picked up by 9:00 or 10:00 in the morning and sometimes it's as late as 3:00 in the afternoon that the trash barrels are empty. So that could present us with a problem and I, you know, if we see something that's an issue, while we've got some recycling people here, I think it's something you need to work on as we move forward with the program.
That'd be fine. I'll, I'll meet with the, with the contractor and we'll bring it up with more discussion. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we're going to move on to the town solicitor.
Nothing other than executive session.
Here we go. Okay, it's time to enter into executive session and I'll entertain motions.
I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to town solicitor litigation pursuant to 42-46-5A2. Town Administrator 42-46.
One at a time. We're going to do one at a time. So we, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, to enter into, on the litigation. All those in favor? Motion to remain on the.
And to remain in executive session for town administrator pursuant to 42-46-5A2, collective bargaining, Teamsters, IAAF, and IBPO, and to remain in executive session.
Let's take a vote. We take a vote.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
And to remain in executive session, town administrator pursuant to 42-46-5A6, prospective business or industry.
Second.
All those in favor? We're now in executive session.
... I believe in the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Local?
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Rodrick.
Present.
Counselor Bowlin.
Present.
Counselor Leonard.
Present.
Counselor Costa.
Yeah.
Counselor Rupa and Counselor Gerffy are absent.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the following: Approval of minutes from regular meeting, July 13, 2009. Counselor Bowlin abstained, absent. Approval of executive session minutes from July 13, '09. Counselor Bowlin abstained, absent. Received minutes from the following boards and commissions: Zoning Board of Review, Conservation Commission, Historical Cemetery Commission, Economic Development Commission, Planning Board III, and the Cemetery Commission. Correspondence received and filed. Received neighborhood petition regarding lots 243, 244, Railroad Avenue, referred to town administrator and town solicitor. Received from Rhode Island Statewide Coalition invitation to seventh annual meeting. Received from Virginia Butterworth regarding remarks of last council meeting. Received from Joanne Rogers requesting two stop signs on corner of Church and Hooper, referred to Chief Blakely and Steve Bellucci, DPW Director. Approval of tax assessors abatements. Distribution of town treasurer reports. Draft of 630 '09 treasurer's report, annual municipal and school order to general approval, 715 '09. Parmally, Poria, and Associates LLP engagement letter, analysis of outstanding school debt. Waste Water Management, John Lencourt, requests authorization for town administrator prepared documents and submit paperwork to apply for $300,000 in financing from Rhode Island Clean Water Finance Agency in connection with Community Septic System Loan Program. And that is tonight's consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Move on to public hearings advertised. Sitting as a, none, sitting as a board of licensing commissioners, Fuel Circle Incorporated, 1837 Main Road, request approval of, to, subject to meeting all legal requirements effective August 1st, 2009, holiday license and petroleum storage. It's your pleasure.
I make a motion that the license be granted, obviously with approval, subject to meeting all legal requirements effective August 1, 2009.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
Seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. On finished, President, Chris Spencer, request public hearing on proposed zoning changes continued from July 13th meeting.
Good evening. At the last meeting, Counselor Costa asked for a memo from, from me outlining how I would go about setting up some sort of a zoning subcommittee, so you should have, have a memo in front of you dated July 22nd. In that, what I did point out was that the, the planning board already has a zoning subcommittee that's looking at the zoning. The majority of the zoning we're looking at right now have to do with dimensional and use changes and utilizing the GIS to remap some of those areas, so. I, I made the suggestion that this, or this committee right now is made up of the town planner, administrative officer, planning board chair, two members of the planning board, and we also have been involving the zoning officer. And then I thought the planning board attorney or the town solicitor as needed when there's some proposals that are getting ready. And one of the other recommendations I made at the last meeting was that. of the other recommendations I made at the last meeting was that.